Whenever Vice President.
Okay, I will call to order the December meeting of the School District of North Barnard. Roll call.
Chisholm, Goldavsky here.
Here.
Streeter, Will.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. Record on public notice?
Public notice is an agenda for mail to the Farnall Act Reporter, KFZ 107.1, the Volvo WFDL radio, as well as being posted at the District Office, US Bank Municipal Building, on Friday, December 14th in the year of... Friday, December 15th in the year of 2017.
Okay. Extended pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item E is approval of minutes. Do you have any questions that concerns or questions of the minutes? Hearing notice, stand approved as per. F is the Treasuries Report.
Thank you. I will take over that since Mr. Streeter's okay. One thing before we read it, I want to draw attention to that page. And in your packet, it is page 47. On page 47... What you'll see is that Maria's done a great job. She's added some things, including some graphs, and I'll go through those in a second, but first I'll do the Treasuries Report, and then Maria, if you want to, just step through a couple of the nifty things that are going to make our Board reporting more transparent. Okay, cash balance on hand. For November 27, 2017, $365,260.34. Receipts for the month, $287,304.38. We transferred $1.3 million from other accounts. That means we had a total amount of receipts of $1,952,564.72. But yet we spent $1,648,392... So the cash balance on hand as of today is $304,171.90. Then if you go to the next page, these... The bills to be approved at the Board meeting. Pre-approved checks, $859,865.23, along with Board checks for tonight, $528,194.89 for grand total, looking for a motion to approve $1,388,60.12 worth of bills.
I'll make the motion.
That's the stuff I'm saying.
Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Haak.
Yes.
Will. Goldavsky, yes.
All right, then could we...Maria, if you want to, if you guys want to, just turning around. Maria, would you explain the graphs that you have included so there's a little better, easier to look at?
Yeah. You can really get the same information from all of those reports that are toward the back of year. It's the Skyward reports, but I just thought this might be easier to look at, easier to understand. So I'll...Every month I'll include three graphs, and they will be year-to-date, starting in July going through June. And the first one is monthly operations. So what that shows, the blue lines show the revenue for the month. The orange line shows the expenditures for the month. And then the green line is the surplus or deficit, the revenues minus the expenditures, basically. So you can see like September and December, we brought in more revenue than we paid out in expenses. The other months, not the case. If the green line goes underneath that dollar sign line, then we spent more than what we took in. And then I just added the orange line that goes up and down. That's our fund balance. So right now, in December, we're just under $2.5 million in our fund balance.
No, if this fund balance gets below here, that's when we'd have to short-term run.
Yep.
And you could see where the revenue comes in, how we get, you know, it doesn't come in equally. Even though you could see that pretty much our expenditures sans August are pretty constant. You're going to see that throughout the year, too.
Yep. Well, payrolls are typically...That's our biggest expenditure. Payrolls and insurances, and those are pretty constant, so, yeah.
Any questions about this one?
And November is one of our lowest fund balance months. That's when I tell Bonnie to, you know, just kind of hold some of our Baker checks that don't have to go out, because that's where we're really watching our fund balance.
Is the higher revenue in September, December, when you get aid payments to your state?
Yep. Yep, and then pretty soon we'll be adding our tax revenue in there, so it'll come in January. And then the next one shows just our revenues by type, so local, inter-district, state, federal, and then other revenues. The blue line is our budget, and then the green line is the year-to-date revenue we've received so far. And we received a little bit of state revenue in December. And then the last one, our expenditures by type. The green bar shows...That's December. Green is year-to-date, and then blue is what is remaining in our budget. And then that red line is the percentage that we have spent so far. So you can see like equipment, we've already spent our budget for that. And insurance, because we pay our insurances typically in July, that's already spent as well.
And that's it? So if you want to, there's more details about where the bills go, what's getting paid, given on your procurement card and that breakdown, if you want to give it any more granular. But this will just give you a bigger, more macro view of, you'll see how we are on budget, what things are looking like. And then I think for me, this is a really good view of this first graph, where you can understand fund balance and aid payment and how that works and see what goes on. So I thank Maria for doing this.
Yep, does that seem helpful? Is that something you want to see every month? Okay, great.
All right, that's what I got.
Next item is the Clerk's Report.
We have some donations. C.D. Smith, $10,000 in kind construction donation to the Baker EDU program. So lots and lots of donors and helpers and whatever for FLC, Adopt a Family Christmas, so that's awesome.
Usually if you get a chance, over, I would say between $15,000 and $20,000 at least. $6,000 cash they had, and that doesn't count people coming and getting things. A festival, I think, picks 10 people off the tree. They went yesterday, I saw Joel going into festival, and they spent over $2,000 in festival on food. So Gail Dudley, Mary Ann Johns, who's like the vintage FLC over there organizing and stuff, it's pretty cool. And I know a lot of people take the time to get that, and it's very much appreciated. One of the things that Terry was telling me this morning, was over there, is that all those gifts are nice. She says probably the biggest reaction comes from the food that they give to the families, because sometimes the families don't know what they're going to do without the school for lunches over that two weeks. So it's a...Terry and Gravy and the crew over there, absolutely phenomenal when they need things, is they keep coming back. Like, this isn't something that is going to ever go away, so it's really cool.
That's awesome. Vicky and Butch Krueg, the brass and piccolo, almost $1,000 for both of those instruments for the band.
They do that for us, they're very, very kind. Not only that, they lay most of all the concrete for free for the village, too. Great people.
Sophia Foundation, $500 for FBLA, and then National Exchange. And Stone Family Foundation, $30,000 for the incubator EDU. That's awesome.
We have about $37,000 already, well, $27,000 plus $10,000 in the kind. So C.D. Smith's going to knock out the wall, put in the glass and all that. So C.D. Smith, along with National Exchange, making...We're still waiting. UW Oshkosh has said they will. We haven't got a final confirmation. Those are all $3,000 or $10,000, that's 37. Then Mike Shannon Holiday Automotive, they've already donated $7,500. We got $1,000 from Kiwanis, plus we have some other ones. I think we're going to reach $50,000, and so it's going to be a pretty incredible thing, so.
Maybe when they have the time or they have enough to come to a meeting and kind of go explain it a little bit?
Yep, and then Kurt just wrote a press release, which I'll be getting to the papers and to the radio stations tomorrow, probably.
I'll send you two. He just did a little video to encourage kids to take the class for next year, that concert, and I'm not sure if Karen's editing yet, but I'll send it to you guys.
Great acting.
Well, some people.
Great acting.
Okay, the next would be the Student Council Report.
In Student Council, we raised a total of $350 in our penny wars. This money allowed us to buy gifts for six children at FLC. Right now, we are focusing on prepping for the Pinkout game on February 15th and the Winter Ball on February 17th. The Key Club participated in the Salvation Army Angel Tree setup and distribution event on December 8th and December 13th. About half of the Key Club members participated in the volunteer activities. In National Honor Society, we completed our second project by planning...By playing elves for five classes at FELC. Students went to the classes to do a craft project and read a story. The project was a huge success, and we received a lot of positive feedback from the teachers. And I did not receive an update from Bessie Allen.
You got anything, Mike? From all the leaders?
We're just getting ready for our day of service on Friday. We go out to the community, all of our student body, and we just talk about our school, and we also build...We also create various quilts and blankets for Solution Center. It's an holiday thing, so that's pretty much what we're going to be doing back, so.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Citizen Input. Jenny says it's here, but if you have anything to say that's not on the agenda already, I'll open it up at 7:18. And close it at 7:18. These guys are on another item?
Yes.
All right, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Haak. We will have some other announcements. And also Samantha, I forgot to put it in there, the updates that you'll see that will have the whole book coming together for the course descriptions coming in January, but they start passing it out, so if there's any concerns or anything, that her and her team can have an idea of what you guys are thinking. Referendum, update in construction process bidding, we're on track. Allison's emailing, getting some things finalized. Today we had some stuff with gyms and how we want doors locked. Dave asked...They asked about what are...How...What is our...What do we want for all of our doors, the standards for our doors and our locks, things like that. We're rocking. It's going pretty well. We did change some of the design, where we are going to have the playground to the south side of the big gym, and that's going to be where the hard surface is, so it can expand the soft surface. So we may not need to revisit buying the property, because we think we have a better solution for it. So we were able to move some things, remember the generator and things that they had talked about. So it's looking good, but we're on track for the 15th bid, and then come back the 8th, and then sort through stuff and get shelves in the ground into March. I will be getting an update when we come back, I'll have everything up on a webpage. Karen is working on a webpage in time. We're hoping we stick it out over the holidays to freak people out. They're like, what's going on? Otherwise, and we'll have a link to the old one, otherwise it'll be in January. I will be having a Facilities Committee meeting, bringing everybody together right before our Board meeting, which is going to be after our...The Board Convention. So that Monday after, I'm going to have the Facilities Committee also at 5:00, 5:30 to 6 o'clock or until 7, so that people can come in, bid process. And I'm also going to, on June 4th, which is a Thursday, I'm going to be meeting with Horseman and Bessie Allen's staff. We're going to start to really dial in a little bit more about what we're going to do with the $2.5 million at these two schools. We're already working on some designs of the offices and safety things. We're about 2/3 of utilizing the budget in the technology education. Paul is just a manager talking about CNC Mike McDowell. I haven't seen this guy just this lit up in a long time. What they can do and the equipment they have, it's just insane. I got the cutting board with a badge on it that they made in 10, 15 minutes. I mean, the stuff that we have, we're also...Dave is getting quotes, we'll be painting. Dave, why don't you give them a couple, tell them a little bit more about what's going on down there?
Like Aaron said, we're probably 2/3 of what we've done with the equipment and everything. Got bids on painting the ceilings, just to help break it up in there. Thinking about, we're going to meet up hopefully this week, if not next week, week after for sure, see if we're going to change out the heating air in there, get rid of the old air handlers that are...I'm going to get everything on the rooftop, give them more room in there, just clean up the area. More usable.
And there's a couple of things here and there.
We'll change the doors, access doors and put overhead doors in, just so we can get equipment in and out. Paul's got a CNC order for the metals area, so that should be coming by the end of January.
Just got new compressor in there. All the mags are run, all of that team and the different shops was all bringing, moving up to date, so it's pretty cool. And then this summer, we're going to be epoxying the floor, and then be putting, it's going to have the areas where you can stand safe. It's going to be good, and I see us being in budget and really moving forward. So thank you for that flexibility and allowing us to go forward.
You guys have any questions about the referendum? Carrie, Joe, anything that you want to add from our process and what's going on?
I don't think so. We're going to be getting together, we have our student committee, and so we're going to get together with them again after the new year. They're starting to look at playground equipment, so a couple of the kids have, their fourth grade leaders have catalogs that they've been perusing and taking back to their classes and asking for some feedbacks. We're going to open that up to the wider group of student leaders. And trying to think what other work they're doing. Just kind of getting some ideas. I've been doing the pizza with the principal, so usually with those kids, not necessarily that all of them are on the building team by any means, but we talk about what's coming and foreshadowing for them, even our fifth graders, that there's going to be some changes to the playground this year, and when you come back next year, even though you're going to be a fourth grader, you might move into the new building before you leave us next year. Fifth graders, you're going to come back when you're older to help out in the building, so just trying to build that excitement and sense of community in the kids, and they're really looking forward to it.
The second thing now is we have our two students from Oakfield, because of InVision Farnall Act, which I'm a part of, and the School District is a part of, of looking how we can have a bigger vision and bring groups together. For instance, one thing is, is this group has been the driving force to get the FDDC along with the Association of Commerce to be one. Well, one of the things also is that there was looking at how can we get youth to understand about nonprofits and what goes on in our community? So these gentlemen here, Kelly Norton, Dr. Seibert, myself went to one of their meetings, and what each youth leader that's in this program, we have three of them currently, Eliza Otteri, Lily Sadoff, and Salom Stebbacher. So they're in this along with these two gentlemen from Oakfield. And what their role is, is they interviewed me a couple of weeks ago, so they see what the CEO or what the district or what the administrator does, and then they come to a meeting. So they're here. So I'd like you guys to introduce yourselves and just tell a little bit about the youth leadership and what you're trying to garner from here.
So my name's Sean Mauer, and I...
And tell them where you live.
North Barnard. And so I really enjoy youth leadership. It's a great way of learning other leaders from the area and both my views off of each other, and it's really cool.
Yeah, I'm Bill Austin-Jerel, and I'm from Oakfield. I live in Oakfield. I really like the program. It's a lot of fun experiences. I meet a lot of people from the community, and I learn a lot more about the North Barnard community and North Barnard community now that I really didn't know before.
So what do you guys about like your interview with me, or kind of hear what you did? Are there any questions or anything that you're seeing about our School District or something that you didn't know, or you're surprised at, or?
Like, everything was pretty much new to me.
So I think that the...We get the referendum stuff, so it's really cool watching that progress and...
Cool. All right, so now they're kind of Orioles along with Oaks. So I was very happy they signed up and keep helping you guys throughout, if you want to know anything more. But welcome to our School District of Farnall. Cool. Sean and Bill. And how are our three students doing? Pretty good. Besides the Sadoff girl, they also seem to be pretty... All right. So the next part is, do you guys have any questions of Bill or Sean? Okay. I was at the tax...This happens every few years, joined review of the Tax Increment District as myself and people from NPDC and one from the county, and then it was with Chuck at the Village and Jim Moore. And what it is, is we have two TIDs. We have TID 1, which is the one where Inesian, Aurora just opened up side by side. They're looking at maybe putting up a new building or something over there in apartments, and that one's making money, and that'll be coming off of being a TID in 2022. The other TID, which is a Zoc property and a Lakeshore property, nothing's really been done there, so that TID isn't bringing any money. So pretty much what it was is that TID 1 is paying for TID 2, whatever it looks at having to pay for it, it's minimal, well, minimal, I mean, it's about $40,000 a year, but that's something that works, so it would just continue to say that that can happen, and then looking at what's going on. And since we are impacted because we are, you know, part of the tax base here, that we get to be sitting on that board. It was pretty informal. If you want more information, I'll get it to you, but there really isn't anything or shadowing, no big news on, you know, a Superwell martyr, an Amazon fulfillment center coming or anything like that. So Fox Con isn't coming, it's far north, so. An Apple is not building there, they're staying up, looking over through. But that's, I just want to fill you in on that, on that we are part of that, so whenever there is a TID or anything, that us, the district being a big part of that, that we're represented there. Also, again, the Adopt a Family we did, we're going to be coming up, we're going to be getting a Compensation Committee together in January, February. The referendum stuff's going to keep rolling. We are going to currently, right now, we're going to be posting for a long-term sub for about three quarters of physical education, the other quarter just to help out the sub. We have a big need for adaptive physical education, which are...Pete! Hey, everyone, Pete's here. Came from Buffalo, made some good time. Yeah, he just left at about 2:30 this afternoon. So I see things, you know, coming up that while we're posting that, it's going to be a long-term sub, because we have a lot of adaptive physical education and that element just getting strapped, so we're looking at seeing how that's going to work. We're going to have a presentation, re-looking at how we're doing our co-teaching, how we're serving all of our different students, and I'd like to bring that forward probably in February-ish, as we're starting to look at that. We will be posting for our Director of Student Services. We want to get that done by Friday, so then that'll be coming up with Debbie retiring after 40 years of service, so we're going to have that coming up. Other than that, besides building and a lot of chaos, I think we're going to be pretty normal. All right? And I'll turn over Samantha, if you'd like to just quickly talk about your...The changes in your Course of Scripture book that you're going to be bringing forward in January.
Sure. So we are making some substantial changes for next year. So one of the things that FIAID staff took a look at is, obviously our kids need one and a half credits of FIAID. One of the things they're doing actually that's really going to help us out in scheduling, and I think it's going to be better for kids, is they're only going to require the PE9, and we will eliminate the course PE10, and so then kids will have more choices, they'll be able to choose again if they're more of that team or individual sports, or based on the fitness or weight training, so. And FIAID staff felt confident in covering the FIAID curriculum with what kids will be able to choose that way. New, but maybe not as new, we had added this, but it was very late last year that Ramsey attended a CAP meeting and that's, you know, got the okay to go ahead and apply for CAP for FIAID. And so we actually are offering it second semester, but we have a really small group, so we're really hoping to have a bigger group next year. And what's really cool is she's able to offer units essentially within a semester course, and kids would have the ability to get up to four credits in FIAID. So the FIAID 105, the Active Lifestyle, Kidneceology, which is that AED, CPR, and First Aid, one credit, and then Beginning Artery Skills, kids can get a credit. So, you know, for many kids going on to a four-year college who don't have any, aren't going for a FIAID major, or something like that, they would complete their FIAID credits in high school.
Or have electives, too?
Or have electives, correct.
And I'll remember, this is all 3UW Oshkosh.
Yep.
So they would have credit 3UW Oshkosh for these courses.
And probably at a later date, not tonight, but we can talk about all the changes that are coming with Youth Option, this early college, all that, whole program.
Hopefully it'll be better.
Yeah. So that is the changes in FIAID. The one last thing that they did is they split Adventure and Lifetime. They were just really feeling there were kind of two groups of kids. One group that wanted to focus more on individual lifetime fitness, and then another who really wanted to do the adventure challenge, and, you know, let's get out there and do rock climbing and you name it, outdoor pursuits. So they've split those up into two classes. Next up, Business Education. So Doug and Kurt really took a look at courses and said, you know, we've got a couple of classes that just have not run in the past couple of years, let's dump them and, you know, really focus on the ones that we are offering. So they did choose to drop the Creative Journalism and Video Production. That was one class that we had kind of combined between English and Business, and it didn't run. Dropping Marketing 1 and 2, because Incubator EDU is going to replace that. Dropping Business, the Environment, and dropping Business Law, because they're not running. So really focus on the other classes. English, Krista Klonderman proposed a course. First she was going to call it Technical Writing, now they're calling it Writing Communications. She's getting the okay from Fox Loy Tech for it to be dual enrollment with them. She's worked with them in the past, and they have that course. NPDC does not, but again, it would still transfer to the UW system. This would be more, again, of that technical and business writing goal for kids. It's a good course, you know, bottom line. CAP, Speech, just UW Oshkosh said we need to change the name. Now they've changed it to Introduction of Public Speaking, so easy there. Social Studies, Government Class, there's some word revisions, part because of our change of Personal Finance, Kelly Mauer has taken out the Mauerville family unit. It's just duplication for us. She's added a little bit more of Native American government understanding, and then we indicated about the citizenship exam that is required of all students in that class.
Which is now 65%, by the way.
Yeah, 65%. Yep. Big deal there. Yeah, not... Math, we are taking a leap of faith, but I feel, you know, very confident in the math department, both Amy Sabel, who teaches algebra, or the main teacher of algebra, along with Mr. Nolton and Mrs. Ank, who have supported Algebra 1A and 1B. Feel like this is the right change. We are going to be eliminating 1A, and then the following year, we will propose to eliminate Algebra 1B. That means that all of our kids will go straight into algebra. We are going to have that special education, small group that does not fit, that need to be in what's called a core math class, but that's independent of this, otherwise everybody will just go straight into algebra. Amy Sabel feels like, you know, what, if a kid is really struggling in math, we'll make sure that they're in Oriole time with her and get extra support, but she's just finding that there are too many kids that maybe just...Maybe middle school math didn't go as well, and maybe it was maturity or other reasons, and it's not ability, that, you know, we need to push them more. Science, they do not have any changes, other than, you know, we are going to still keep physics out there to see number. I know that Mrs. Orlabek's scheduled, she's teaching an overload this year. Mrs. Hinz, you know, same with chemistry and everything. Mr. Verassa added the Project Lead, the Way I Want to Training, you know, he's willing to look at physics in the future. I just don't know if it's going to fit into our schedule, so we may, if we have kids interested, have to look at alternatives for them to have that course. Sorry, I did not take up this one. Social Studies. Art, big change for art. Art has proposed that they're going to change their courses from year-long courses to semester, which again is going to hugely help us out in the master schedule, and a reason being they're finding that many times when kids join is that semester, I think we have four kids joining that semester this year, at least, that sometimes it's hard to match up classes. And art's one that kids want to take, and if it's a year-long class, we're putting them at semester anyway, so just makes sense. Tech Ed, changes, dropping hominidance and BOTS IQ, and then new class. Mr. McDowell continues to have kids afterwards, too, that are like, oh, you know what, but this is what we want to go into, and yep, we're going into the construction field, but, you know, we wish you... And yep, we're going into the construction field, but, you know, we wish we could have woodworking 3, we wish we could do different product, projects. And so sometimes they'll ask to do independent study, and then it's kind of hard for him if they're in the Woods 1 or Woods 2, that, you know, he's running two different shows. So we're going to offer woodworking 3 and see how that goes. Mr. Helm has two classes, one being Metal Art. His hope here really is to try to get more females into welding, and really take a look at that. And that Metal Art is a huge field. I mean, all those crash tools and everything, it is, it is a business. But then kids will have to learn the basics of welding and, I'm going to say it wrong, but metallurgy? Am I saying it right? Got it right? Okay, yeah, new word. And then the other one is Introduction to Technology and Manufacturing. So again, this is what he feels is kind of that, you know, beginning class to get kids, you know, hooked into Tech Ed. Family Consumer Ed, did not give me their changes by Friday, but did meet with her this morning, and really some of it are word changes. We had Pro Start in the names of our courses, and Stephanie's recommended that we take those out and just do, you know, Introduction to Culinary, Advanced Culinary, that the Pro Start really doesn't have to be in there. I think originally we thought using their curriculum, it had to be in the title, and now she's found out it does not have to be. We're trying to rearrange the hospitality schedule with her, and try to get more kids offer an independent study. Reason being is, we don't want our foods kids to have to kind of take away from what they're learning and have to prep the line for the hospitality class. And a little bit of that was happening this year, and trying to manage her schedule. So we have a couple of kids now who are doing an independent study and coming in there, and they're like, yep, you know, we're good to prep the line and get it all ready for there. So she's like, I need to offer that as a class next year for kids for independent study. So, the rest of it, again, is just, you know, word changes, and a couple of classes making them a little bit more wordsmith, attractive for kids, and things like that. But those are our big changes.
Any feedback?
I just have a question about the physics. So can you explain that to us? So we don't offer Physics. We have not offered Physics in a while. And that isn't anything that, like, if the kids are going into sciences or medicine, pre-med, or anything, do they need that?
No, I mean, they need more, the more science they have, the better. Do I think that we need to have Physics at our high school? Yes. So that's why, and I'd have to look at now, when it's been, when we had Susan Vellman here, you know, we ran it with, you know, smaller and medium classes, and then she left. And it's very tough to get someone with a Physics license. This year, what we are doing is we have one student who's going over to Fannie, and they're taking the class, and then, you know, we get billed, whatever it is, you know, for it. That student just got accepted to Madison today. So I was very excited to hear that. Mick, McCord.
Oh. Eric Killidool, too.
Yeah, I haven't heard all, just heard first round of Madison, you know, sending out, so that was exciting. But, you know, again, Vicki, I think, I want to see the number of kids that are signing up, and then that'll really help us, you know, either to, again, have to post and really search for someone who'll be willing to do it part-time, or, you know, relook at, you know, where the rest of our classes are at, and then, you know, talk to Mr. Veressa to see again, hey, what would it take? Or, you know, again, to talk to Fannie and other neighboring schools as far as, you know, what do you have? I know that UW Oshkosh said, you know, same thing, depending on, you know, next year, maybe they could have someone come out here. You know, it's always, you know, and when I asked Fannie, you know, early last year, they're like, well, we don't know until we have our schedule done. So, I think if we have decent numbers, then Mr. Stedup and I will meet and, you know, really look to post that position.
We have...
No, I was just going to ask, so what is a number? You're talking number of students that are interested in the class?
Right. Well, what we'll do is Samantha, we offer Physics. It's just are they taught here or not?
Right.
So we offer Physics. So if somebody wants to take Physics, we'll figure out something with Fondleak.
No, so I understand that, but I'm just saying, having it here, don't know what...
No, but the one thing we have going for us, maybe five, maybe?
Five more.
The one thing we do have going for us is licenses change. We have a really good teacher. We can get them licensed in Physics. Before, it was a huge ordeal just to get that to happen. So there's, we have a lot of things going in our favor. And if we have five people sign for Physics, that could be a good thing to look at having that class here, right?
I mean, if it's, you know, if it's one or two, it's really hard. We've started classes before with five, and then they've grown, and I think definitely it would. You know, I just don't know where this group will be at as far as signing up. We have a lot, you know, that's why Kim Orla Beck is teaching an overload, because we have a lot of kids who want to take med terminology, and nat and phys, you know, the biotech, so...
Have you ever done any, physics is a pretty standard class in most high schools. There's always, seems to be enough to run on. I'm just wondering if we've ever dug deep into why kids aren't signing, are interested in it.
There's...
Go ahead, want to speak up and tell us what your thoughts are.
Well, no, like, this last year, there was a bunch of kids in my class who were interested in taking it. And I think they signed up to take it, but they couldn't get the, like, transfer to Fannie where, like, with the other classes they wanted to take. It's like a bunch of, like, the engineering kids that want to take it.
There are actually another two other kids. And both declined to look at it. I think the hard part though, Steve, there are college professors who have told me and who believe that Physics should not be taught in high school, that they don't feel it's appropriate. And then there's the other school of thought that it should be. You know, if you look at the ACT guidelines as far as scores, they list in there that, you know, kids will score higher if they have Physics, you know, and kind of that sequence. So definitely, we're always going to offer it. We just have to have, you know, numbers more than, you know, two or three, that, you know, are really hard to run a class and look at that. So, yep, we'll figure it out.
Did you ever take Phys?
Yeah.
Moves large emotions.
Well, I knew that if I ran into a wall, it hurt. I knew that.
But did you know why?
No. Cool. Any, so we'll have that coming in January, but if there's any changes up till then, we'll let you know. Anything else from the administrators? Anything from you guys?
I just got a quick question. You said you were going to discontinue the video production class?
No, that was...
Not Oriole TV.
No, not Oriole TV. No, that was offered, both Krista and Kurt originally said they would like to do like a joint class of English and Oriole, and it just hasn't run. So, something different. Yeah, not the video production whatsoever.
No, I suspected that Oriole TV was not in the discussion, but I just saw that word there. I didn't know of that.
Yeah, that's been our Course of Scripture booklet for a couple of years, but it just hasn't run.
We are, Disney's looking to buy Oriole TV. We're just going to go with the Star Wars thing coming up. But we're just going to play that slow and figure it out.
If I can share one more thing, you know, Friendship does a fantastic job of adoptive family and everything. This year, the counselors, myself and a couple other people said, gosh, you know, we've got to look out for high school kids because they're typically not serviced by Friendship, and we're, you know, hoping to figure some things out in the future, so don't share. But we kind of, you know, looked at kids 9 through 12, and we do, you know, we have several kids that are in need, whether it be, you know, they're on free reduced lunch or different factors that we know families are struggling. So today after school, we had 63 gift bags for both boys and, or young ladies and males that are kind of a combination of a bunch of little things and gift card and some food items. So we're going to distribute those on Thursday to kids. So we've had, you know, great, great staff support. We're trying to figure out, we actually had an anonymous donation of $1,000 today. So that was really cool, like, okay, what, you know, what should we do to support? And that was for anything we want to use for the rest of the year. And we had a retired staff member that last week Thursday said, you know, take a look at all of our negative lunch balances, and please let me pay those. So there were 23 kids that had negative balances that got paid off. And then all, actually, those 23 kids got an additional $5 put in their account by that person, so...
And we had somebody donate $7500 for the school store, almost $40,000 for Incubator EDU, and $29.5 million donation from the community. And it's been a, 2017, you know? Not been bad. We've been, we've been trying to look out of how we can get over this revenue cap thing. I've been pretty happy. And we are, just a heads up, we're getting in a contract now with CISA 6. It's Karen Bartelt, Tiffany Dolan, Michael...
Beth Dardis.
Beth Dardis, Carrie Jo, Debbie, Dr. Matthew Dahl, other, some other people from Agnesian. We're looking, we're going to be, we're applying for a grant for planning a charter school. And that charter school is going to be for exceptional students. It's going to be students on the spectrum, some not, but it'll be a different type of learning. So we're going to, we're putting our toe into the charter school world, and we're doing it in collaboration with Agnesian. So it'll be interesting. We'll see. You guys might be sitting on the board of a charter school, too. We'll say STEM Academy what? Start talking about ours. I can picture when they said exceptional learners, I thought it'd be kind of like that X-Men type of thing, you know? Maybe Peeve your president, you roll around wheelchair, and shit, something cool like that. Yeah. But so just a heads up, we're going to be doing that also. All right.
And any other announcements? Hope that was it. Okay. And I'm Kay, as new business. Number one, discuss and consider moving the March Board meeting date to Monday, March 19th because of spring break.
I'll be here. I will require the administrators to be here. It's your call, I couldn't care less.
I probably won't be here, but it doesn't matter.
I don't know if I'll be here either, so...
I don't think I'm on the 19th.
On the 19th?
Oh, the 19th.
The 19th. And it wasn't showing on the calendar.
Well, the regular reading is the 26th.
Right.
The fourth.
And this will be Mike's last one, because it'll be right before the elections.
See, I probably will not be here the 26th, so the 19th...
We're off the whole week then, it'd be crazy.
Keep it on the deal.
That would leave three.
Yeah. You know what I can do too, is we can make, I can make it like light, extremely light, because we're going to hopefully get this new services director in February, and then we can see some things. We're going to get probably all of our bits awarded in February, so we can see some things. So I can make it light either way. But just from a show of here, who can't make it on the 19th? You can't on the 19th? Who can't the 26th probably? Okay? So if we go the 19th, make that switch, we'll know that, we'll have that. Pete, how about you?
I'm good.
Okay, so why don't we say the 19th? That way we know for sure. And then we'll just make it as light as we can, and Melissa will get you everything in advance. So if you have any input or have any questions, I'll try to make it as non-controversial and light as we can.
Sounds good. I won't care, I'll be in together, so...
Okay. And remember, we did make a decision with policies that you can't FaceTime in. We don't allow it, all right? We did make that decision.
I was thinking about that. I thought, well, I mean, I could, you know, maybe, but...
No, not by law policy, you can't. We made sure you can't.
Because why would you want to?
That's right.
All right, so then, so then, I guess...
So light is appreciated.
So then I guess we can make a motion to do that.
All right, I'll make the motion to move the March meeting to Monday, March 19th, 2018.
I'll second.
Yes.
Chisholm. Yes. Podolsky, yes. Will.
Yes.
All right. And number two, discuss and consider accepting the retirement of Debbie Ellingen, Pupil Services Director. 40 years, unbelievable service. I've worked with her for five, six, and then 13, so 19. I've almost worked with you for half of it. Six at Fondleak and then 13 here. So just a wonderful person, has helped us out in many ways, and I just want to thank her.
Thank you. As my letter says, 2018 years. I can look forward to the letter to...
And you're not done. We're going to have more, and I think you'll have a bigger board. We'll have a bigger board meeting for you and get you some fun stuff when we get into May and June celebrating. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot of celebration coming up. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I really also appreciate the time when you did that. That allows the district to plan, and you know how much things are evolving, and that is very much appreciated, that you're that kind and allow us that opportunity. So thank you so much.
Thank you, darling. It's been a pleasure, sir.
And you've hired quite a few people in this district, haven't you?
Probably more than half.
Yeah?
All right, so the motion on that. I will make the motion to accept the retirement resignation of Debbie Ellingen, Pupil Services Director with regard.
How's that going?
Rocha?
Hack.
Yes.
Podolsky, yes. Chisholm.
The left hand link.
Yes. Will.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Fine.
I was going to say something that was pertinent.
Remember?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, number three, discuss and consider Jacob Heffner, Middle School Wrestling savage.
This one, and I saw, I'm like, yeah! He lives right down the road, and he's got young kids. He works, his family owns ACH Foam. Just a great guy. And he's a state champion under the Marchand regime in Fondleak. Just a great guy, great neighbor, great person, big bike rider with Little Ridge Tracks and Jerk. So, God, this is going to be cool.
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
Ready to question? Rocha?
Hack.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Podolsky, yes. Will.
Yes.
All right. Number four, discussion of the 2018 WSB resolution in preparation for the Wednesday, January 17th, 2018 Delegate Assembly. Oh, I know this is always a part of the meeting that you guys love and look forward to, so...
I mean, we're getting home in here like 50, 20 minutes, so you can stay here.
I can sit.
Okay. There's...
It's just getting good.
It's just getting good.
Although, these are resolutions that set the lobbying policy for the WSB throughout the year, and they are set by the Delegate Assembly at the Schoolwork Convention. So this year, I found there's less, actually, only 13, and they're very, not very complex issue, which is kind of nice, to kind of address issues rather, not simply as far as not being valuable, but, you know, a little more, a little less convoluted than normal. But I'm just going to go through them all. If any of you have any concerns or questions or want to discuss it further as to whether If any of you have any concerns or questions or wanna discuss it further as to whether we should vote for or against, just let me know. 1801 is just technical stuff to repeal outdated resolutions because of changes in laws and things like a number of school days in session, binding arbitration has gone away with Act 10, and healthcare marketing is kinda the same thing, so. That all one is, oh, I asked Aaron to back me up on some of these where he has more day-to-day knowledge.
All these have nothing to do with the change, except for laws have changed, stuff Act 10, and they've never cleaned up language.
All right, 18.2 addresses the hours of instruction, deals with adjusting the previous resolution that was part of the policy, so that the WSB can lobby for bills now in the legislature on hours of instruction. There's companion bills, I guess, both decided in the assembly going through, and basically allows local boards more control over how to set the schedule or hours without risking losing state, because some of the changes can cause that problem, so.
Yep, and really, really quick to piggyback on that, we got rid of the days of instruction as hours and seat time. I'm gonna call this a Dr. Mary Pfeiffer rule, or law, because she's been the one pushing it. A lot of it has to do with school to work with youth apprentice, with learning in many different ways, where it's not your seat time in school, but you're learning at many other times. So all this does is says, we're gonna hold them accountable for learning this curriculum, but you don't have to sit in the seat for that long, you don't have to be at school that long, because learning happens in many ways. And because of Dr. Pfeffer and her putting this forward, you'll see that part of these bills have this exclusively only to school districts and C S S. I don't see us really attacking this right now. I don't see this as an issue for us right now until maybe we look at how we do school, and that's a bigger question, so. But that's, it's been a ground swell from around this area, and it should just get more flexibility.
18-3 is high poverty aid. It's asking for allowing high poverty districts to receive high poverty aid outside of the revenue cap, rather as part of the revenue, or under the general aid, so that it's not subject to revenue limits. Basically, like most, or a lot of them every year, it's ways to generate more income for districts to be able to operate. 18-4 is the FTE calculation for the revenue limit. Wanting, I guess it's DPI, right, that would get the revenue limit to districts before July 1st each year, and then add other calculation options, the renomination system, three-year correct rolling average, and districts have to use five-year rolling average, or even a current year calculation, because sometimes your needs change quickly, and you may need that money more immediately than waiting for the rolling average to take place.
That's us right now. And the bottom line on here is, there's only so much money. So if you go with the current year average, or somebody else goes with the five-year because they have declining enrollment, so it's less. It's not gonna, somebody's gonna win the moves, it's gonna change. And I really think this whole thing, in my professional opinion, is kinda moot right now, because they just got together a blue ribbon committee to look at funding. They just started, they're gonna do listening sessions, this would be part of that. So I think this allows, this helps the declining enrollment by expanding it to five years, and also helps us. We would be one of those schools that would wanna claim current enrollment, because that would allow us to get the aid that we need to get in order to help us meet the needs of kids. So I think this is a great idea, and once again, as Steve says so eloquently, these aren't laws, this is just giving the authority to lobby for.
Okay. 18-5 is voucher transparency, putting the amount of the net reduction of aid on district, a district gets, for, gets or loses due to the voucher program right on the tax bill.
Still a whole chance in a real hot place. This, along with moving the tax credit over to where the schools are, so that you can see that this tax credit actually reduces what it says you're paying for schools, as long as there's the current, even if it changes to the Democrat side, this would make a lot of sense and be transparent. So like, if we levy, last year, I mean, we levied for voucher schools like 30.
Like 38,000.
So what it would be is, on your bill, it would say voucher program $420, or voucher program $33.50. So every taxpayer would know how much of their tax bill is going to the voucher schools. And I'm guessing that would change the perception of vouchers. So that's why it will never go on, right?
You're saying the law would never change? WSB may pass this resolution?
Oh, yes, but this would happen, so this'll pass, sure. But it will never change, the tax bill will never change, right now, not unless something really crazy happens, some independent gets involved.
Steph will go in and lobby everybody, even though, say we can't do that, probably not have a good reason.
Well, it's also the property tax relief, when you look at the higher, you know, that aid, where you have, you go to like the Green Lake, you go to like up north where there's those high value, you get money back. The higher your value is, the more credit you get back. So there's some of those things too, that, I think, all this stuff's gonna be looked at in that new commission. The reporting part is, this would make it very transparent, but it has negative political impacts in many ways.
All right. Okay, 18-6, per pupil reimbursement for transporting transportation, transporting voucher students. State fully funded cost as category.
Hey, we bust those kids this spring to WLA, now that they're getting voucher money, they can pay some of that money back to us, or get less, which this won't, this is, makes a lot of sense.
They'll be very protective of the voucher program, I'm sure. 18-7, safe and welcoming school environments, more of a general policy statement, and I think every district in the state tries to keep their schools safe and welcoming for schools, but more or less a statement. 18.8, dabbling with the WIA again. This is to support the WIA staying autonomous, basically leaving them alone, not allowing the legislature to start stepping in and forcing WIA to change things or do things certain ways, keep it a voluntary membership with it being a nonprofit organization, so I think that makes sense, keep politics out of it. 18-9, implementation of no time to lose report, was that a national report, Aaron, I believe?
Yeah, Luther Olson helped, actually was kinda driven by the state, and they looked at best practices. Matter of fact, we've seen a lot of great new practices coming out, innovation from Kentucky, Colorado, even some Arkansas, I mean, some of the places that really needed to get this going. So what it is, is hey, let's look at what's working best and try to emulate that, which means we might have to change some state statutes and change the way we do school and funding, so. But it's, let's look at that, it's based on what's going on and use it.
18-10, another resolution that just supports local fiscal control, supports locally elected school boards to have control of local fiscal affairs. And basically, it's just that we already have a lot of policy on that, but strengthen the WSB position on local control.
That and 1807 are both, I believe, directly related to some legislation that's going on in Assembly and the Senate, for instance, about reporting all violent acts, about the Teacher Protection Act that's being circulated by Representative Dean Feld. So I think both this local control, along with the welcome and safe, are the way WSB has to say, we care about people, we care about kids, we care about staff, all these legislative, some legislative statutes are trying to paint a picture that, that isn't so. I think that's what these two are about, is the WSB saying, no, we believe this, and this is counter to some of the legislation we see coming that paints public school in a, in a not so good light.
All right, then, 18-11, recovery school district of WSB wants to be on record for opposing recovery school districts, and that's where due to poor report cards or testing or whatever, a state can come in and take over a school district and set up some different type of administration or management. And if I understand correctly, it's only been used once.
No, it hasn't been.
Hasn't.
But if received, would get raided again the same as they did this year, next year, if it could. So that's, because they have to be over 15,000 kids, and it's really restricted to the larger school districts, so. But the thing is, they don't even know how that would all work anyway, so it's kinda, kinda like No Child Left Behind, when everybody had a pass, it sounded really good, but they know they adjusted this, it's in there, but it doesn't know, it doesn't have the structure or anything even to help, so we'll try to alleviate that before, before it's a debacle anyways.
Okay. 18-12, referendum restrictions. WSB poses limits on scheduling, duration, scope, or effectiveness. And I think that's in response to some current efforts to do, well, one actually passed, right? The date said you can even hold a referendum, or limits on local control.
And that was right in the budget, so that didn't even have a hearing or anything. That was right in the budget. And once again, we can, we have very active legislators, this is Representative Schraer, our old Assemblyman, who's started to circulate a lot of these things.
Wow, okay, and 18-13, teacher certification and licensing changes the policy to a general statement supporting initiatives that support great teachers.
Yeah, people are kinda nervous to see, we've been asking and asking, I say we being public education, for flexibility in teacher licensing, came up in a conversation I have with Samantha. We're gonna be looking at, we want teachers who are great pedagogical experts in literacy and numeracy, and all those earlier levels, and your ability to move teachers around, or like Mike McDowell, if these licensures wouldn't have changed, he'd still be going to North Dakota University to get his license to be a tech ed teacher, which would have been a waste of time for him and a waste of time for this district, so, a waste of money. So there's, there's a lot of people that they think like lifetime, all these things are gonna make it more, less important, but I really think it's kinda one of those things, be careful, you ask for, you might get it, we're getting it, and I really, I'm excited about how it'll be implemented. So I think that's a great, just hey, WSB is in line with DPI, with WASD, AASA, we got some good things going, let's not mess that up.
Well, I wouldn't ask about that, if DPI is writing the actual rules.
Yep.
The law passed with the budget, the changes are coming, any thought or word on how long that's gonna be before that's all come in?
Would Adam will be able, would, that's happening now. One of the things that they're confused, there's some languages with how the law was passed that would make, like, if you currently don't have a job in a district, how can you get your license? Because that wasn't addressed, because there are some people who are teachers that don't have a job or people graduating, so how can you get your license? So they're cleaning that up, but DPI is writing those rules. They were proactive about this, matter of fact, I don't know if the state knows, but a lot of those licensing rules came out of this area and conversations, but the DPI was kind of more, I wouldn't say forced, but encouraged to be on front of this relicency process. I know we're in a unique situation where Gail was the last year she got to be a lifetime teacher, now here's, here's Jacob.
He just missed by you here.
Yeah.
But it comes into play, for example, he has a broad field social studies license, but he's teaching economics, but he needs a certification in that, but do we know, you know, in a year or so, will he not need that actual certification, just the local?
He will need it, but it'll be endorsed by the local state. So what, with our evaluation system, he'll be put in the economics, and then Director Teaching Leader and Principal, whoever would monitor, support him, and then this is one thing, is that DPI is coming up with these rules and what it looks like, so that you, the district, will be signing off, the clerk and the president will be signing something in time that's gonna say, the board approves of these educators, administrators, they maintain their licenses. So all those different things, they're, they're working through that, but I know they're, I know they're doing, we see things periodically. Adam's on top of that, so when he would teach your licensing, Adam is, he's already got his toes in there and already has been very proactive with getting this information to him.
I was gonna say, the latest thing I just heard the other day was that they're still gonna go up to school districts to decide what, you know, a successful teacher is, or what a successful year is, so they're encouraging districts to, you know, have an answer for what they think that would look like, but for us, it's gonna be, if they are rated effective or distinguished, and we're allowing them to still work there, that would be a successful school year.
Could that be used to have one of our current science teachers?
Absolutely.
You know physics, and you feel they're capable of teaching.
Like a starting level.
Yeah, so law would then be, they have to have, I think, six semesters of successful teaching, so as a district, we decide what that means as far as successful teaching, which would be, we evaluate.
It makes sense, and it's less restrictive, and what it'll do is it'll empower teachers more. But the neat thing is, is it's up to us. If we don't do a good job with evaluating, if we don't do a job with professional development, all those like stories of, oh, you're gonna put somebody into that, and then they're gonna screw it up, and they're gonna have all these problems, that's on us collectively to make sure that doesn't happen, and we support it. So in theory, in the way we're looking at it, this is gonna be awesome, absolutely awesome.
And I'll just add to, are we gonna hire someone that does not have a teaching license, or, you know, things like that? I don't know, but on that rock, that would be on us, but.
We would have a plan, and that would definitely come with the board, the board would be the ones that would hire them, we wouldn't, we would just recommend, but there'd have to be a lot of things that would be in place for us to recommend somebody like that.
So, so in other words, for example, me, I could come in because I have a ton of anatomy background, I could come in and teach an anatomy class, but I don't have a teacher's license.
You would, okay, so you, there's a couple things, because you don't have a bachelor's, because you don't have any background in teaching, there's a couple things that you would have to do or prove that you can do, but in essence, yes. If you could effectively learn about pedagogy and child development, and about standards and curriculum, and you had effective classroom management, you could develop all those things, absolutely. The reality of it is, when you want great teachers, I mean, it's just, it's techniques. So that's, that's, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at, we could have an amazing teacher at the high school, say you would be an incredible language arts teacher, reading teacher for first grade, we really want strong first grade teachers, we'd like to have you go try that. And guess what we could do? Yes? But we'd have to support them, that's, all these bad, or it almost goes back to the Common Core argument, where people thought it was terrible, but that's because of bad teaching, because of bad curriculum, not because of the Common Core, which is just standards and language arts and math. This is the same thing, could extreme things happen? Well, you're looking at who's on the line if those bad things happen, and if we recommend people to teach who shouldn't be in the classroom, but it gives us flexibility to find people.
And they can teach just one class at a time.
Absolutely.
Just like I do at college.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And as of right now, for administrators, nothing's changed there, so you still have to go through a administrative program, and nothing's changed, it's just in the teaching and the information's changed.
And there'll be more clarity as it comes, but it's gonna be a good thing. And now I'll add TPA, which is this federal requirement for all student teachers, I think what that's gonna end up doing is making all, making your teaching license transferable from state to state to state, which will help us out huge too. If we have somebody coming from Michigan, or Illinois, or New York, they have a teacher's license, they've been through a TPA, which is a, it's almost like a teacher, National Teacher Certification for introductory teachers. So there's, there's a lot of really good things, it's tough to get into teaching, but once you get through it, there's a lot of great jobs, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of really common sense things coming out, which, it's pretty cool.
That's all that I have for the resolution. Saw anything there that question or discuss for me? Right up to the meeting time, you know, if you have anything or something to let me read or you wanna let me know.
If you guys want, just, what I can do, we don't really need to go to close. I don't have any update on Elmwood, and we could talk about the bonus thing in open session, because we'd have to come back and pass it in open session anyways. We can if you want, but that's a call from the board.
I'm fine with it, if you feel that, it's okay.
Hey, Mike's here.
So we don't have to do any discuss and consider?
Right, if you guys want to, because what I've done is, is I've sent this to you, and I'll pass this out, this is a letter, and I had sent each one of you individually that you guys got, and, you know, the comments I got back, I feel confident that I think we can discuss this in open session.
No, I'm backing up to the resolutions.
Nothing.
So I can pass this on?
Yep. What do you guys think?
How does that work agenda wise?
We'll just not do closed session, and then we'll come to open session, and we can talk about teacher bonuses, which I, or teacher compensation.
We won't be able to talk about property sales.
Correct. I don't have anything. All right. What do you guys think? So what we can do is probably have a, just to have a motion to discuss and consider bonuses for, for staff.
We need to, do it in the closed session, and immediately come back out.
I don't think we need to. We were gonna go to close if I thought that, that. What I'm, from a sense of transparency, and I think the conversation in open session will be a good one anyways, then I don't see a controversy of, we could go in and talk about it, this is something we wanna do, but I think, I just, I think that from what the vibe I'm getting to have this conversation in open session, share this letter with administrators and everybody else, I don't think would, I think would be a good thing, instead of having it closed, coming up reiterating what we talked about in closed, and then, and open. The only thing I won't do is, I'll give individually what, what the breakdown, who gets what, so that you can see that, but we won't share that, because that's, no need to, but I think that could, I would recommend that, because I, I think that would be an appropriate thing to have that conversation, because I think we'd share what we did in closed and open and.
I think the minutes would reflect that we, the board chose not to go into closed session, and then we move on to the open session. Number one, discuss and consider bonuses for staff.
All right, so I have a letter here, and what the idea is, is that we're always, so we're always looking to, how do we improve? And what I'll do is, I think I'll go through the letter, but where this comes from is, we were at a deficit, up into about $240,000. Everything is kinda fluid as it goes. Last year, we had talked about, the board is very strong with, if you're effective and you do your job well, we can no longer freeze, otherwise we're gonna lose people, things won't work out. And we know hourly wage increases were about 3%, salary were anywhere from 1.5% to 6%, depending on where they were on the educator salary compensation advancement schedule. So there was a, overall, all salaries went up above 3% last year, between 2.5% and 3%. We also were able, as a district, we know about our insurance, that we kept that premium quite, you know, at 10%, our deductibles are very low, our co-pays are very, very reasonable. But one thing is, is so we had $240,000 or deficit, but because of things, and I'll go through these with you quickly, we are in a different state right now. So the reality of it is, is that we, when, when was this, Maria, last week, Friday or Thursday? Thursday.
Thursday.
That's when I kicked the chair, I think. I kick chairs when I. I kick chairs when I get excited about good stuff. I make sure it's safe though, and I'll make sure that there's no word in its account. So, here is a letter that, from input from you guys that I put together that kind of explains where we're at. So, this, this year, our enrollment increased about 5.46%, staffing levels, we added seven staff, budget, this is amazing, our budget went up almost $900,000. So we are getting more, we have a lot more costs coming up because of what we've got going on here. And our enrollment, open enrollment went up 20 more students, our open enrollment plus went up 28.5%. It's insane. We also passed 29.5 million dollar referendum by almost 70%, and our district had its highest rating on the state, we report card, with two of our schools ranked exceeds expectations. We believe our growth and success as a district are based on three reasons ranked by importance. Number one, the people that serve in our district, this is, would go to the staff, you, our culture, the great service and opportunity to provide our kids every day. You are the number one reason that the district's most successful. We've talked about that as a board, as a school district, that we are only, as buildings are nice, technologies is nice, but it's the people that make the biggest difference. But we also know a bit more students means bigger class size in some areas, more behavior strength, overcrowding, if you go over to Friendship, the library's smaller now, we're adding a classroom. Another change is switching insurance carriers in January, the district is still dedicated to keep those premium low and deductibles and co-pays as reasonable as possible. There's a lot going on. Our staff has done well, the reason that we're successful is because of them, but there's a lot going on that comes with that success. Even with pay years for this year, which all of you have earned, the district would like to thank you with a bonus, we are projecting a small surplus after our aid and tax revenues have been finalized, because of this, the district would decide, would dedicate approximately $20,000 to bonuses for all 172 employees. How they'd be divided up is, if somebody works 20 or more hours a week, or a salary, they would get $100, uh, $100, I didn't say thousand, $100 of a bonus. And all employees that work less than 20 hours a week, and all people hired after the first of September would get $50. How does that correlate? We have, we would have a total of, I believe, of that 172, I believe that, what is it, we have about 12, or about eight of them are $50, and the rest are $100.
Yeah.
Ish.
Yeah, I think that's, that's about right.
Ish. So the majority would be $100. So the cost of all that with WRS because it's taxed will be around $20,000. So what I ask is, the district is looking to have a, a revenue surplus, and that is because of our staff, and even though it's not a landslide, a ton of money, I think, and what I would recommend is that we do it in a check, a regular old school check with this letter in there, and, and they would get it Thursday, Friday, and then everybody go home with like $92 after taxes, or $46, whatever that would be. But, they've done a great job, I think your leadership is huge in that, but when I started looking at these numbers, and when Maria just nonchalantly comes in and says, oh, it looks like we're gonna be, I mean, and we haven't had that, we've, we've had to take mitigated risks in order to get where we're at, and it's, for the most part, they're paying off, not everything's worth it. So, my recommendation is, is knowing this, what I've been very proud of the board, is that we have said we're about people. Sometimes they're hard conversations, and we try to hire the best we can, but it's the people who are making our district great. So, that's kind of what my recommendation, and this is from feedback from you guys from the past, I think, I think everything changed in 2011 with Act 10. And how at that time, it used to be, we had the union, we had the school district, and we found out at that time, there isn't a union or a school district. The school district works for the teachers, works for our, hourly, works for our support staff, we need the best. And I did very proud to be part of a, of the board, an administrative team that puts the money literally where in their mouth is in order to do that.
Well, I'm gonna abstain from the yea or nay of it because of, I might be one of the people that would benefit by this, so. As far as the logistics of it, I like the idea of doing the, if the board decides to do it, a separate check and not just putting it on the regular payroll check where it just kind of was welded into the net, so makes it a little more special. With that, I'll let you guys discuss.
I think it's a great idea, and I'll leave it up to you, if you say that we can afford it with a, with a budget, I think it's a great gesture.
Anything can happen between now and the end of the year, but where we stand now, it's looking to be between a zero and $40,000 surplus. I wish I could, I wish I had a crystal ball.
And there could be more.
Go over to LC and talk nice to the board. So, looking for a motion then?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the bonuses. Roll call.
Strider.
Yes.
Chisen.
Yes.
Lebowski, yes. Cock.
Abstain.
Yes.
Excellent, and if you guys wouldn't mind, I took your ideas, put them into this letter. If you wouldn't mind, you can take one, sign it all, and I'll make copies and get that to the staff and the thing, so whichever one you guys want, you just sign here. And we're all here.
I wrote on mine.
Yeah. We're all here. Yep, so that's administrators too, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't...
That's true. That's all I got. Thank you guys, thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Steve, you can sign it though, right? You can sign it though, right? We told you to do it.
So are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
No, I don't look at a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, the rest of the job, yeah. Yeah, thanks, keep it on.
Close it out. Close it out.
So, second.
Chisen. Yes. Strider.
Yes.
Lebowski, yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody.